It's eight o'clock, let's go to the House of Representatives.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you everybody for coming today, being intense. Uh, first item up for the agenda would be approval of the minutes. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And approval of bills. Uh, in the packets and then additional bills. I think we're on our, our desks this morning.
There's two bigger ones on the highway, I'll ask for motions later and explain.
Motion to approve paying bills.
Motion and a second to approve paying the bills, roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Lighthon.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Financial report. Finances are in the packet as well. Hope everybody had an opportunity to go through those. Any questions? Anything to point out Candy?
Nope.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the financials as submitted. Uh, roll call as well.
Lighthon.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Uh, treasures checks. Motion and a second to approve the treasures checks as submitted. Roll call as well.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lighthon.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Anything we need to add on there Candy?
Nope, I think we're good.
I think you're good.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
How many motion to approve the agenda is presented?
Motion and a...
Second.
Second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. First item up is Sarah Leidy, Extension Service.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Good morning. I, I brought some people with me today, but first of all, I just want to let you guys know that uh, we did offer the agent position to Lindsay Overmeyer. And she has a wealth of knowledge in the ag field. She comes to us from Ohio. She's currently living in Nebraska, uh, where she just finished up her doctoral research, I guess you could say. Uh, and she did accept the position, so, uh, right now she will start November 1st is the, is the goal, so. And thank you Adam Lighthon for serving on the committee, we appreciate it.
Of course.
Uh, so if you have anything to add about Lindsay or, uh...
Uh, no, I mean, yeah, she, she, her background is in, uh, well, she knows North Dakota from some of her work history, so she isn't gonna come in blind to North Dakota, I mean, what the code is all about. Uh, yeah, she has her, uh, her doctoral work in, I believe it's plant health and plant pathology, something like that.
Yeah.
So she's got a lot of background information when it comes to cropping systems and crop scouting and everything you can pick up, all that would come with Extension. With that A and R agent, we were, uh, her presentation that she gave was very, very good. We were very impressed by it, so I think she's gonna be a good fit, so.
Right.
Uh, excited to get her on board.
Yeah, it's a presentation that I would, I would see it pronged up.
Yeah, it does, it was, and, and you could just tell she, she did her background research around the area, she talked to other Extension agents, other crop consultants in the area to learn about our area previously coming and talking about different issues that effectively related to agriculture and things of that nature. So, already had started making contacts with other local agents and things like that, which was pretty impressive too for somebody that's just come out of college, so. Yeah, she's, I think she's gonna fit in well, so.
You're doing November 1st?
Mm-hmm.
About, uh, three weeks?
Yeah, that's right, yes.
Great. Yeah.
That was forward to me.
You know, I was hoping to get her started earlier.
I know.
Two week turnaround, get from Nebraska to here, find a place to live, it's been pretty quick, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's wonderful.
So, so yeah, so that's exciting news. Uh, the other exciting news is that it is 4H week, and if you've been following us on our social media, we've been having some 4H trivia and, um, some other fun things, we got a coloring contest and, um, it was Wear Green Day yesterday, a few people were asking us, what in the world are you wearing green for? So, uh, but we have, um, a couple of our awesome older 4Hers here. We have Matea and we have Adam, and they're gonna tell you a little bit about their 4H careers, a little bit about what some of their favorite projects are, what, some of the things that they do in 4H. And we'd love for them to share.
Great, wonderful. Who's first, Adam?
I'll start.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Adam, I'm in Birdbusters, I was president of it last year. And I really enjoy 4H, I mean, I learn a lot, I have a lot of fun. And this year I went to the state shoot for 4H and I really enjoyed that and I did well. And 4H is just a lot of fun and a good learning experience.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Matea, I am a part of the Ramsey Riders 4H Club. Um, my club, we do a lot of like horse work, we work with horses. And my experience in 4H is learning leadership and, um, communication skills. I went to a camp in June called EYC in Fargo and I met a lot of new people and that inspired me to do, to inspire other people to go since I was the only one from Ramsey County that went.
Yeah, so there, you see that, um, 4H has, um, stuff for younger kids, the older kids, and, um, a lot of different ways to be vault. I'll point out, we got an awesome 4H dad in the, in the house right here. Uh, he's got a couple of kids in 4H, um, but we currently have, we have eight clubs.
Eight clubs.
And now is the time to start registering 4H, 4H, and we get, we're getting a lot of calls, so.
We added at least 15 new members just in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And how many, uh, participants are in 4H?
Last year when we ended our year, we had 202. This year they're re-enrolling now, so we don't have a current.
Good comment, but 202, that's a lot, a lot of kids.
Sydney, I hear that you started one?
I just started a club last year, yeah, because we just had so many kids calling, so I have a club of about 25 to 9-year-olds.
They are the clover critters.
They are the...
They keep up with their own age, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we just wanna thank you by offering each a donut and Matea has a I love 4H spirit, we hope you were that right.
And as a 4H dad, I'll say the 4H leaders are phenomenal, so it's, it's not a secret on why the, uh, high participation in 4H. Adam and Matea, how long have you each participated in 4H?
I've been in it for six years.
I've been in it for seven years.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Would you go to that buckle through 4H or that...
Yes, I could.
Thank you.
And a couple of our commissioners are also 4H dads. And we have a 4H grandpa. And I think someone's marrying into 4H, correct?
I'm good.
Yes.
We're all connected.
And just a, just a note, and we always can use new, um, club leaders, so if anyone knows of a past club leader or something that would like to start a club, we'd be very interested.
Always in need of, always in need of volunteers.
Come on you guys. None of you want to know this?
New A and R agent, new career candidate.
All right, well, it looks like...
I'm a 4H guy.
Horse people will be, well, we'll come around. So we just wanna thank you for everything, your support.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It would be a day more fun if you did.
Yes, it is. Uh, we're a little early for our 8:30 district health conference call, uh, so we're gonna move in. Kevin, if you wanna go ahead with Tony Highway.
Okay, we wanna start with the more creative discussion, as long as you guys are here and...
Yeah.
Okay. Well, essential of the copy of what how the bids went, so. Need to review them before the meeting. The first machine there, the 772, really doesn't meet the weight spec we are looking for, so. We're probably looking at the last two groups of numbers there. On the outright purchase, cat is low, but when you look at the trade-in values and then purchasing three machines, then, uh, John Deere was low with the 872. Then when you go further, if you do look at the buyback numbers, which is kinda what we asked for, I guess, the overall spending money after the whole seven years, then cat gets low again with the bottom, figures on the bottom there for three machines, in those seven years, we'd spend $322,035. So that's kinda an overview of how the bids went. I don't know if you guys wanna give a short presentation or, I guess we should off that, do you?
Sure.
So, you're talking the buyback. Is this a guarantee or no?
It is guaranteed.
It is a guarantee?
The guaranteed buyback kind of over seven years, that's kinda, that's the number.
And our machines now we're trading back, we kept for seven years, cause that's the warranty we have on them. Price correct, so the intent would be we would keep them to seven years and that would be the guarantee?
Yep, the warranty would run out again.
Pretty close to being run out again in seven years.
And is that the only spec on the 772 that does not meet the specifications is the weight?
Right. But again, you know, like I said before in the past, we, you know, we can bladerose with a small machine, but when it comes to time and pollen snow and push out the snow out in the ditch apart, we can, we need the weight and our work car. That's why we spike back on that way. So when, if you think about it, if we were trying to push more with a smaller machine, like, it'd take us twice as long possibly and the snow wouldn't get pushed out near as far, that type of thing.
Does it meet spec with this premium circle?
We gotta look at it, no, I guess they'll tell you it will, but it adds 364 pounds of premium circle, but then it's still short. I don't know what that, it adds more than that, but it's short 364 pounds.
And how much is the overall weight of the machine? 51,000 pounds or something?
Uh, if you look at the spec, the way we asked for it in the printed specs, it's like 390...
Thousand pounds?
Oh, 39,000.
Oh, 39,000, okay. So 39,000 pounds, you're talking about a difference in, you know, being off by less than 1%. You know, is there, is there a really noticeable difference in performance on less than 1%? Just out of curiosity, cause I, I mean... But with my personal opinion on running, uh, the graders, oh yeah, yes, in the winter time.
Okay.
And that's just...
I mean, I, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to ask a leading question, I just really am curious.
That's just experience that I have with running the pieces that we have. I mean, we've had several different ones, in the winter time, it is a huge difference, like it will sting you on, on the weight. And we had some with four cylinders and some with the six cylinder engines, it's a huge difference when it comes to that.
Right.
As far as horsepower, but we're not talking horsepower, that's the problem, it's the weight.
I guess if you ask any company, they'll tell you the heavier, the stronger the machine, the better the seller will go. I mean, that's pretty typical.
What we did, uh, add premium circle to our machine to bring the weight up, just as Kevin said. And some of the other options we have on our machine, when you get down to the delivered weight of the machine, there's very little difference in weight spec. By the time you put the snow wing on, the other option on the machine, by the time we add our mowboard or other features, it's still equates to, like you said, less than 1% in weight difference. You're talking less than 500 pounds difference. Well, if you go with our bigger machine, then, and our weights are comparable, and then we're adding more horsepower again, we're kinda forced in because of the few hundred pounds. We're forced to get our next class of machines, which is a 300 horsepower machine. So if you look at the one sheet we provided, it'll show you our 872s versus cats 160s. Should, you know, to make it an even, even playing field with weights out important, we should force cat to fit in 160 next time raise the horsepower up, it would be an even playing field for us to fit against it. You know, otherwise, um, just as the last time, we're gonna get a bigger machine against a smaller machine, we just can't compete.
You know, that's, that comment is quite true, but as far as, you know, adding the weight of the things we asked for, Caterpillar's doing the same thing, they're, we're asking for a bigger mowboard, it's heavier, we're asking for other options that are heavier. We asked for the printed specs because that's all we have to go by, really.
If I may say something, we gotta start somewhere at the base weight and the 150 is at 40,380 base weight. So our, our 150 is bigger than the 872 base weight and it's over 2,000 pounds bigger than the 772, where we started out at the gate, that base weight, so. They add weight, we also add weight, so what we're after is the base weight, so we know where the specifications come in, that's what's printed off, and from there we both equal, adding weight, so.
You gotta look at, your brochure doesn't specify what mowboard and exactly how you're getting that weight compared to our brochure. It's showing you what mowboard we're using.
It specs, and the specifications say right in there, 14 foot mowboard and then so forth.
But how much of the weight?
It's the standard equipment.
It doesn't say in the brochure, I've never seen it says 14 foot mowboard, I guess.
Well, instead of having you guys sit and debate each other's machines, how about if we have RD will give a presentation on what they're, they did and, and we'll have Butler do the same thing with what they did and the benefits of, of each and we'll, we'll take Kevin's recommendation and we'll try to finish that up in the next 10 minutes. So, go ahead.
Uh, so we got the 872 GP that we bid, uh, joysticks, um, more fingertip controls, kind of a personal preference, no, no difference in price between the two. Um, it's gonna have more horsepower, uh, if you wanna go by printed brochure weight, it's a little lighter than the Caterpillar 150, but it will be a, have bigger machine, um, than the 150.
Did you have any other...
Um, yeah, it's a heavily duty machine, I guess if you're looking for recommendations, this is where Lighthon was using 872 and Kevin brought it up in the last meeting. Uh, you can talk to Clarence Green out there, they have really good luck around here, they continue to run the bigger machines, like Kevin said before, weight, horsepower is a lot, that's why, so. Uh, I agree, you know, um, maybe you should try one of our 872s to see what it does by, if, um, maybe we don't ask for you to try all three of them, maybe you at least try one of our machines to see how you like it. And then it'll give you an idea if you wanna up the horsepower on the next meeting to see if, uh, the next round of graders, you wanna go a higher horsepower. All the counties that we service run 100 more graders, 770s, 772s, 872s, they all pop snow. I mean, we've got very satisfied customers all over. If you wanna talk to any of the customer, maybe you reference us with our machines. It comes down to a bidding game with numbers on a spreadsheet, you know, it's personal preference. If inter preferences gap, that's what it is, and we understand that. Basically, the graders will perform, uh, as well as one another within a few hundred pounds or these.
Kinda like buying a Chevy or Ford, you have it.
Anything else? And go ahead, Butler.
So the 150 that we, uh, bid today is, I wanna say is a well-balanced machine. Horsepower is a benefit, but when you can't match it with the weight, the balance isn't right, you can spin out. And as Blaine said, I mean, it's, it's a big factor to have weight. The, the neighboring counties that we got, Rollick County, Tonner County, Benson County, Nelson County, if you add them all up, they got 27 150 all wheel drives. I got good relationships with the operators and we listen to what they have to say. We've also talked to Ramsey County operators, right now you guys got six Caterpillar machines. Um, the last time that we had a cat care meeting, we asked the operators if they changed anything and they said we hope we get in another Caterpillar just because of the comfort and how they like the machine. So, I guess, um, we're bidding the machine that you guys have today and we're hoping that, um, so we can continue doing business with you.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, anything you wanna add?
No, you're right about the operators do like those machines, um, we did have, we, last full round, we had two 870s. They were the 872, which is a six-wheel drive versus a rear-wheel drive. And, uh, they have the steering wheels in front, that some of the operators were saying, uh, the view was different. And it is a little bit of steering wheels there, but, um, as far as operation, maintenance was, and service was never an issue with the deers, I will say that. They are, the, the cats are a little more, uh, easier to sit in and, and be comfortable. Little bit more, uh, pressing on the controls. From the old machines anyway, I'm not sure what the new ones are like, but... Yeah, I guess, to be responsible to the taxpayers, I would look at that, uh, total expenditure over seven years and my recommendation would be, and also for me, it'd be nice to have all the parts the same, uh, all that kind of stuff. I mean, it's not super important, but I guess my recommendation would be go with the three Caterpillars, 150s. Just because of the price of trade-in value at seven years.
The one time we took John Deere's, uh, they had a steering wheel, and cat had one away from the steering wheels.
It was still a steering wheel?
No, they had steering wheels.
No, cats doesn't have them, no. We did not expect the steering wheel, I mean, you have to ask for the steering wheel in the cat.
We have to get a different model, one 140. Which is a smaller pain wheel.
So the John Deere?
Yeah.
Yeah. We did ask for the joystick operation and they did bid that, but with even with the joystick operation, the steering wheel was still...
Was still off, our steering wheel was still on.
Still there.
That's what the operators wanted, was a steering wheel, I remember that time.
That's what...
It was closer money than this.
Well, I guess, from my perspective, the one thing that I'm not clear on is normally when we take low bid, we take the low bid, not the, not the high trade-in value seven years from now, right? So it seems like the only way that you can argue that cat has the low bid this time is by doing some gymnastics about down the road trade-in things, and I don't think that we normally have that as part of our consideration. And I'm not sure entirely whether or not that could end up with us in hot water because we're not, you know, taking the low bid because we're saying, oh well, in the future it'll be potentially cheaper by... Well, I understand that, but it's still...
A lot of people do look at, a lot, a lot of counties do look at that though, they ask for service, fuel consumption, all of this, the water costs of over a seven year period and base reward on that. And we didn't get that in depth of what fuel costs are gonna be, what the maintenance costs are gonna be. We just looked for the buyback value.
Do you have something?
Uh, yes, you also look at, you know, their, these buybacks, right now we are offering more money than the guaranteed buybacks on those as well, so that's not saying seven years from now, it'll be...
What you're saying is our guaranteed buyback on our machines we have now is 130,000 and they're offering us 140 and 144, that's what you're saying.
So yeah, they're not for sure numbers, depending on the market, what they're saying here is from now.
They're guaranteed that.
Guaranteed buyback is just a number that you rank, come on, the mow graders, both dealers have at the time, how much money they're willing to risk, but no, it fits your seven years from now, I'm guessing what they're gonna be worth.
Right, which we're guaranteeing, no matter what the market is, 150.
Yeah, no, I understand that. It's just, you know, it's one of these things where, when the, the machine that, that RD was claiming is comparable, and I'm not making a statement about whether or not it is, is a hundred thousand dollars cheaper on the front end. And the machine that it seems to me like everybody in the room agrees is the much bigger machine, is still $30,000 cheaper on the front end. You know, I, I guess it's, it's one of those questions like, well, why would, why would you want the much bigger machine? And I'm not trying to, to beat you guys up, I just know that this is an outcome up twice. And I wanna make sure that going forward, we don't end up in these situations where we're trying to figure out our head from our tail. You know, and on how to actually, to run these bids where everybody that did bid felt like they got a fair shake at it, so.
Adam, Blaine, yeah?
I, I mean, I, I can understand the thought process behind, you know, and I always question too how we, you know, what the legality is, of it is when we talk about buying off the bid or buying off of the buyback spec on something where it's this big a dollars. And that's always what gets me, you know, cause then if, if we're talking strictly meeting spec under the specs that were presented, as well as, um, just a little bid, then cat technically is the little bid, but cause they meet spec, lower than the 872, yeah, we're, but then if, if we're not gonna use buyback either, then we can't use trade-in either, it's just a straight line, what's the cost? To me, I like looking at the full buyback, cause if I know I've got a guarantee and I know my outlay, then I think that's the most reasonable way to look at it. And to say that that's the bottom line, 322 versus the 325 on the buyback, and me cat wins on both sides. Even if they aren't the bigger machine. And I, I don't know, just kidding, a dog in a fight either, deer comes in low, I'm fine with deer too, I mean, I drive all deer on my car, so. So, other than one piece of, one piece of...
I've been in a combine, a green combine, one company, for guarantee, was that combine been working five years? And you guys are willing?
Yeah, it, yeah, I mean, if it...
Or one higher than the other one?
It'd be interesting if we could get our equipment with guaranteed buyback in five or seven years down the road, that'd be a good deal to me, I'd take that in heart, dude.
Is there any limit on hours we have on the machines in the buyback?
Our warranty runs out at 8500, there's no limit on the hours, but our warranty...
Runs out at 8500.
That's on both machines?
On both machines.
And in the past, you set it up so at the end of seven years, we're kind of at the end of the hour.
Yeah, we'll probably, without, it'll be within 500 hours.
Yeah.
Sometimes we go over, rarely we go over the number.
So we kinda know on the hours when we get on?
Yeah, exactly.
So like I said, the other time we went John Deere's, it was the difference in the steering wheel, and the operators wanted steering wheel. And they were that close that time, you know, relatively this close, you know?
For the sake of time, this commission's viewpoint is that the bottom line number is the number we're gonna care about as a little bit. Is that correct?
That's my rep, out of the whole project, or...
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is everybody here thinks that we should use the bottom number as a little bit, and they're all comfortable with it?
Well, I think we should use the 150 that Caterpillar taught me to do it lower because of 772 technically under the spec bids, doesn't meet that.
I know, I'm not looking at that, I'm looking at...
No, he's, I, I see. I get what you're saying, though.
Right, so, but that's fine, I'm just, I'm asking, cause I, I wanna make sure that going forward, that we're gonna, well, I probably won't be on the commission at that point, that we're gonna use that same number always, right? Which is good, as long as we know we got a stated...
Well, in all honesty, if we could buy like, when we buy vehicles for the sheriff's department and stuff, if you get a guaranteed buyback, I take that as a number as well, I think that's a reasonable approach, cause you're looking at total outlay of taxpayer dollars over a certain span.
Yeah, no, I understand, okay, then I'm making the motion that we accept a little bit from Caterpillar.
The motion second that we accept the bid from Caterpillar Butler Machinery. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you gentlemen for coming to the...
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, it's time to, uh... With that, it's time to. Time for the Lake Region District Health.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
The conference administrator has joined the conference. There are three attendees on the conference call.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
Currently, this is Jeff Brett from Ramsey County. I would presume that we have Eddie Pierce and Benson County is present.
Eddie's here.
Eddie's here.
Benson? Has Benson County joined us yet? And we'll get them, just the three of us, so. As soon as we get a hold of Benson County, we'll call the meeting to order then. Benson, Benson County, are you with us now?
No.
Well, it called the meeting of the Lake Region District Health Joint Board of Counties issuing the order. First item on the agenda would be to election of the chairman. Do you have any nominations for chairman for the joint commission?
Hi, you're speaking, Jeff. I'll, I'll hear more than nominate you.
All right, and Mr. Stephan has.
I'll second that.
Mr. Brown, we have a second.
Thank you, Mike.
Any further nominations?
I move that nomination cease.
Motion to cease nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, you will continue on then. Thank you. Roll call of counties.
Eddie's here.
Do you want individual?
It doesn't matter, it's up to you.
Individual members from Pierce, you want to go ahead and state your name?
My question's.
Mike Christian, Ben Mike, Ben, Danny Hubbard, Dave Migler.
Eddie?
Atlantic lawyer.
Neil Rhodes.
Dave Kurtz.
Okay, Benson County?
David Kurtz, Tom O'Dea.
Harry Bennett.
Tom, wait, you have it.
All right, Ramsey County, myself, Jeff Brett.
Ed Brown.
Lucas Wakefield.
Adam Leipman.
Blaine Boe.
Okay, roll call of counties has been completed. Take a look at the minutes from last year's meeting. Move the road.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last year's meeting. Any additional corrections? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Minutes are approved. Twenty twenty-two budget, I will now turn things over to Mr. Alan McKay. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. As you can see, if you look at the budget, we're asking for exactly the same amount as last year, and that's six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and change. And the bill levy changed a little bit because of what land values changed slightly. So it's about a, it's basically a break-even budget for last year. How we did that was because of, of money from COVID that we've gotten from the state and the feds. And they actually got us some, some numbers, so we actually have them in the budget this year as compared to other years. They usually come late, but how much they're going to give us, so that is a, you'll notice that's a difference. We had immunization HE is on the second page, that's immunization health equity, which was two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred. And health equity was about sixty-two five hundred, and COVID was about a hundred thousand dollars. So those numbers could change yet again as they've, they've gotten additional monies for, for COVID, for public health and, and the state health department, so, but at least we got a line item for them this time, which was nice. If you noticed anything else that you have questions on, those would be the big items. It would be different from, from the twenty twenty-one budget. Anybody have any question?
Yeah, Alan.
Yes.
Mike Curtis is in here. I noticed the paper that you had of our school that should pay, pay the health nurse for fourteen thousand dollars for the using a health nurse one day a week.
That's correct. That, that came through. They got some money from the feds for COVID to do exactly that. And we, we sat down with the rugby school and, and made that agreement. In Devil's Lake, All True provided the high school with a, and the school system with a nurse plus twenty-five thousand dollars a year for ten years. So we're not, we're not providing that to Devil's, for Ramsey County. And we have Benson, there are several schools. We have yet to meet with all of them yet. So these are the ones that are done, both Ramsey and Pierce.
Alan, this is Terry, I'm Palmer.
Yep.
So I, I guess I have a missed issue with that.
Okay.
Because of the fact that the taxpayers are rugby only paying, okay?
Yeah.
For the health nurse for five days a week. Okay, now, four days a week. And now, the taxpayers are paying again, basically, to have her at the school. And then we have to turn around and pay for her assistant. So, you know, why are we doing that?
Well, because you're paying for her salary as four days a week. We're, we're getting the other, her fifth day from the school. And if she wants to, if she goes five days, then we will hire another nurse to take care of the school. Matter of fact, we already did that with some COVID money. There's another nurse helping out at the school that, that they're also paying because Sam didn't have enough time to get everything they wanted. So we do have another nurse that, that helps them out also. She's a contract nurse and she's helping Sam out in the schools. That's the, that's how that was negotiated, yes.
Yeah, I, I still don't, I still don't agree with that. Especially because we have to pay her assistant besides, and now it sounds like her assistant's going to be working more hours than what we paid for her.
Yeah, well, we paid for those extra hours through COVID money. Okay, those, you don't pay for those, Mike. We, we pay her extra to put in extra hours with COVID money. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't be able to do that.
So when COVID is done, this COVID money is done, then this is going to quit, or what?
That's correct. Now, not for the school. I hope the school looks to the future to keep a nurse in the school. We've been working for that for a long time, but in some way or shape or form, we would like to keep the nurse in the school. It's, they, they really like it. It, it goes over very well and it's very efficient. So we hope it keeps going after COVID, but that's where the money is coming from right now.
So Alan, you said she, she already works four days a week and one at the school, so now she's down to three. She, one Friday, she hasn't for a long time.
Yeah, if she, if she works, basically, you're paying for four days and, and the school is paying for one.
So we're down to three?
Wow.
No, how does that work then?
Well.
Well, then, then we're down with it when we did.
Yeah.
We're not gaining anything that way because we're paying her for a day then that she's not here anyway.
Well.
I mean, we're all part of the going to school. We're not having to bother with that at all. But it's just the way it's played out. You know what I'm saying?
Right, right. Well, it's, we, if she has to work all five days, she will, but when that's necessary. But yes, the, the school is paying her for one day and another nurse besides her to help them out. And you're paying for four days, yes.
But is that only good for three?
What's that? Well, in some weeks, yes, and some weeks, no. It depends on what goes on.
But I mean, she hasn't worked for Fridays for once.
Well, that's not quite true, but on general, you're, you're correct.
So, but still, okay, so in that, Alan, we're still, we're getting double hit here because we're paying taxes for, for the money that the district health is under Pierce County. And then we're paying taxes to support the school, while the school is paying her too.
That's correct, that's correct. But they're getting, the school's getting their money came from the federal government through this COVID grant. And all the schools were available to get that. A lot of them took advantage of it, some didn't, so.
And that should pay for our assistant.
Well, that isn't what goes on there. But we can look at that, we pay for her any hours over that, that she puts in over what you pay for. So we're paying her those extra hours.
Okay, now, this, this is off the wall, but she already gave up her other job to be here, all of a sudden I'm going to check, then what's she going to do then? Look for another part-time job?
I don't know. It's very clear that we are only paying that with COVID money and the contract we made. It is very clear on where that money came from.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions? Any other questions from anybody?
I'll make the motion that we approve the twenty twenty-two budget.
Second. We have a motion from Adam Leipman to approve the twenty twenty-two budget. We have a second from Pierce or Lucas Wakefield. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call for counties. Benson County?
Aye, David Davidson.
Aye, Tom O'Dea. Aye, Mark Kirkland.
Aye, Tom. Aye, Mike Johnson.
Okay, Eddie County?
Aye, Neil Rhodes.
David Kurtz.
Aye, Atlantic lawyer.
Pierce County?
Aye, Dave Migler.
Dave, Terry Hubbard.
Aye, Mike Curtis. Yes, Mike Brown.
Ed Ramsey County?
Aye, Ed Brown.
Aye, Lucas Wakefield.
Aye, Adam Leipman.
Aye, Blaine Boe.
And I, Jeff Brett. Motion carries. If no further business? No, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody online.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. The meeting of the joint commissions for Lake Region District Health has been adjourned. Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, continuing on with Kevin.
All right. Galen did deliver all of our chips for us that we got kind of needed this year, so that invoice is forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. So I'd like a motion.
Move it.
Second. Motion and a second to go ahead and pay Galen for delivery of chips for next year's SEAL project. Roll call.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Leipman?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Well, I did voice, not listed on my agenda, there was the one from KLJ for the engineering on a new box cover. We signed the contract, so this is a portion of that contract is seven thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-four cents for the design of that box cover. Motion to pay that. So.
Motion and a second to go ahead and pay KLJ Engineering for the design on the box cover, seven thousand six thirty-one seventy-four. Is that payment?
Yes, I do the payment.
Roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Leipman?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
I like it when four H comes, but they leave donuts and then I can't make motions because I'm eating my donut.
Okay, no, just a heads up, we need to replace the fuse panel in Webster. It's still the old twisty and fuse it, so. When the insurance company was there and they said.
I move to give a quote on that.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't have, you don't have quotes yet, you're just.
No, here, just. Second.
Do you remember the twisty ties?
Motion and a second to pick quotes for replacing the fuse box, fuse panel in the Webster shop. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
And also just a reminder that at public meetings for the US IOD project, is that, I'd like to present today. Just to informational, needing public input. I guess it'd just be a good thing for commissioners to go to, just, for when you get questions from the public, you might be able to answer the questions or anything. And I guess we got the letter from secondary roads for the county maintenance agreement. Remember, every year we sign that agreement, say that we're maintaining all our CMC roads. And there's four signatures, the state's attorney, auditor, chairman, and myself have to sign that, so I'd like a motion to have signed that agreement.
So. Second. Motion and a second to sign the letter for the secondary roads. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the last thing I have is when we were in Bismarck and met with secondary roads, we talked about the Hampden project paving up there. They reminded us that we have to have the sidewalks in ADA compliance, which we did have, not have figured in there. So just a heads up, that's, Paul's working on getting that done, but that's going to cost us a little more money. It's not an option. Either we don't pave through Hampden, which it really looks silly at all, or we have to do the sidewalks, so.
And it's just that curb ramps, we don't have to replace all the sidewalks, but.
Just, just on the corners, basically, so you.
Well, like, the good news about it is, is that once it's in compliance, it's not like we're going to have to redo the sidewalks every single time we pave through there. It's like a one-time expense.
Well, you know, Hampden will get some nicer sidewalks in the corners, too. I'm sure this town will find out.
We got any projected?
I have a question. I, I, just to check out last night where, where they would go and rotate, but I haven't put numbers to it.
So this is on existing sidewalks, correct? Because we're not planning on putting any additional sidewalks or anything like that. How many sidewalks are there intended in this?
There's one on the block that post office is on, one on the other side of the bar is, and then one on, in front of the equipment. So there'd be either six or, sorry, six or seven ramps that you have to put in. You need a motion activating? No, uh.
Well, so you see a valley maybe, but for now, just a heads up, it's gonna cost us more.
Right, yeah, I guess it'd be. In the design agreement, we had just figured on doing the um center thirty feet through town, just doing it all related and something like we did um a lot in a few years ago, and I guess I could look at the area over there, and I guess we got by the.
Yeah, it was a few years ago, and ADA wasn't as rusty back then, but now it's required.
Yeah, very good. Uh it takes more. You want inspector, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have to get our fellow dollars through that section.
And then we're looking at options to um possibly do some milling in front of that where the gas station, well, they they took out their gas pumps, but they have a service shop there still. Like, we're looking at some crosstalk from that possibly, too. Cause yeah, cause we're the sidewalks, so there's gotta be curb then, correct? So we're gonna have to build out to meet the curb height and stuff. On the post office side, there's actually a second lift there, like we do, like there used to be two steps. So that one we don't have to mill on that side, but on the bar side, if the street goes right up to the top of the sidewalk, and if we don't mill that out, it's the water's gonna spill over and dump right against the door. Building. Against the building. That would be very good. You know, so yeah, so the crosstalk, I think, will up through that block. Be a kind of, just a big patch, you'd have to take out the asphalt to get it down below that. Or raise the sidewalk, you know, I guess the public sees it cheaper.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing what the bid is for that.
Sure.
So that's all I have, unless you guys set us off for me.
You have anything else, Paul? Nope. Well, I guess just that we'll, we'll include that in our design estimate for that project either, so I'll have something to be able to do for that. I was hoping to be able to just slack through the thirty feet from the center, since we weren't even touching those sidewalks originally. But that didn't work.
Anything else?
No.
Anybody else for anything for Kevin?
I'd just like to commend Kevin on his good performance during that with you.
Oh, yeah, you do well.
We were. It was fun.
All right. Kevin, anything? Anything else?
No, I I'm done with the NAEP board now, so. Time for one of you guys, uh.
Well, thank you for your uh service on that.
That was all.
Organization.
If you ever get the chance, it's a big opportunity.
Well, there there's some fantastic uh representatives from northeastern North Dakota.
That are.
On that committee, um you know, be between yourself and and then you have Stanley, Commissioner Dick from up in Cavalier County is the president and several others on that that are on that committee and on that state board, so. We have very well represented up here, uh.
There was a title in Ramsey County, I have three on the board. Uh Jerry was on, Bill was on, and myself. So it's wild though.
We were running a cabal, weren't we? Five was on for a little while.
Well, thank you again. Appreciate it. Uh next item on the agenda would be the twenty twenty-two final budget. We had our budget hearing oh the twenty-first of September. Our political subdivisions have been working on their budgets since April of March of this year, so it's been a a long process, um and. Anybody have any reductions? We can't go up in our preliminary budget, but we could uh reduce it if anybody has any reductions, if they love to point out.
I don't have any specific reductions. The only thing I would like to bring up for a a point of this discussion is in sitting through some of the um presentations on the Association of Counties, especially the one on the ARPA funds, um there is going to be an option to use those ARPA funds that, you know, they there's more clarity on what we can spend them on now. Um and we're gonna be at what, two point two, something like that, two point three million? And I don't know how we're going to spend all of those or what our plan is. Commissioner Fithner actually visited yesterday, that we should have some type of a plan, at least how we wanna spend them. But particularly to this budget, if we did wanna do reductions of any nature, we could use some of those ARPA funds because you could use them for, for instance, paying this uh new state's attorney's salary, uh things like that. That those were portions of that you could use those ARPA funds for. I'm not saying that's what we should do, just for the sake of everybody's knowledge, I guess. How much are we mopping the office? Who we pay for that? I think we could probably get away with doing some of that as well, simply because we could say that we're using it for spacing and COVID relief and things like that, so we could probably use some of those dollars for things of that nature. Um when we calculate, and I don't know if Candy's done it, but have you calculated that revenue loss thing we did here yet? Do we have a revenue loss? We do not, okay. Cause that revenue loss, if we would've had one, we could've used those dollars then to highway and used, uh cause that was an allowable use. So there's a lot, there's a lot of different things we're gonna be able to use it for, and some of it's gonna be uh we can offset some salaries and things like that, which will, you know, would be not a bad thing. But I I don't know if we wanna down the budget, cause I think, you know, it's one-time dollars. So we kinda, I think if we think we're gonna be staying somewhere near this level, it's probably good to get to that level, and then we can kinda parcel out, you know, parcel out dollars as we need to, but. Key word to use that is what? Yeah. Money. You know, we start paying salaries. And few of your dollars, you say, oh, we gotta throw that in the budget, you gotta pay for that salary. Exactly, and the only, my only thought. You might as well put it there, cause I don't think we're laying off the assistant state to turn it any time soon. No, no. My only thought was if we could, if we could, maybe instead of going from, you know, we're going from ninety most to a hundred, we could cut down and maybe split it in half, just so we're, it's a more easy ramp up for the for the for the people of the public, you know, instead of having to have quite such a job, you know, then it would be a use of those dollars, we would still be putting it in the budget and and we could, you know, offset some of those at least. Just just a thought, uh it's it's not that it has to happen, but it's. All right, I like your thought. I like your thought, I mean. I I think those ARPA dollars are gonna be kinda interesting once we get going to figure out, you know, how much paid office is gonna be involved with if we wanted to use it for renovations and things of that nature. It's gonna be kinda, kinda, but it's gonna be worth it handy, let's put it that way. Really?
I um.
There's no guidelines, make it simple?
I I I I think I'd be in favor of trying to focus on using those dollars for one one-off, one-time expenses. Um and just taking all the lumps now. I've read too many examples that I've read about in my studies of American government where where they did exactly that, what you said, which is we'll we'll work our way in, but it's sort of like a an addiction to painkillers, right? Once, once you're using them for that, it's too easy to stay using them, yeah.
No, I I don't disagree. I'm just, I'm I'm finally taking our lumps. It's not like we're asking for a twenty-five percent increase for around six percent or six point three or whatever, which is, to me, after the year we've had, what we have to deal with, all of the issues we're having to try to fund, it's not an unreasonable request, and I think you can even see it in the budget meeting. There wasn't anybody up in arms, they just were asking questions as to where are the dollars going? In all honesty, I think it's kind of amazing we only went up six point whatever percent, considering we got pro-budget in there, we had more greater costs in there, we had the additional staff we have to hire. I think it's a pretty solid budget overall. It was just something that came to mind. I didn't know where everybody else was on in terms of, you know, how we felt about going from that ninety to a hundred, if we wanted to try to ramp it to, you know, make it more than staff.
You know, I think every government agency's seen the same increase, city, the school, other counties, I mean, it's not just us.
Yeah, I I and I I think it's just a question of, like you said, some of the counties are probably using COVID dollars to offset some increases and things like that, but then it comes down to like, and and talking yesterday with with Jeff, it's not like we don't, I mean, I'm sure if we want to, we could find two point two million dollars worth of projects that we probably have cut off across the county easily if those dollars are available to spend on those things, whether it's courthouse improvements, whether it's, you know, there's a lot of different things that are, and and I I have a feeling, you know, cause those dollars are gonna be available for other infrastructure things that aren't roads, unless they make that change for roads. So there's going to be people that are going to be, you know, requesting additional dollars over that bottom one, too, so. I think it's good to keep it utilized for improvements in the county, so.
So accordingly, it's, I I think based on our preliminary budget increase was eight hundred and six thousand four sixty-three increase. Between the sheriff's department, um adding the additional deputies that we did, and the drug force uh drug task force agent, two hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars. Uh law enforcement center, four hundred thousand, um and that may be light on what's gonna be needed for incarceration costs. And then state's attorney for the additional uh staff up there, a hundred and fifty thousand roughly.
Pretty much the entire increase.
Pretty much the entire increase.
So our budget actually was, other than the challenges we're facing, is pretty uh good, cause we fit in a three percent raise with the cost of with the the cola plus the staff. Plus we got mortar graders and the paving and everything involved. Without the challenges we're facing when it comes to incarceration in our community and crime, our budget's really, really solid, I think, and I I think it's easily justified. Well, I just wanted to break it up for discussion.
And I I think that the community understands that, you know, that they that you know, doing coffee time with Eric and having people come in here, it wasn't like anybody was saying, I don't want you to have an extra sheriff's deputy, or I don't want you to, whatever, I think, I think people understand, but I also think it it's clear that costs can't continue to increase in those areas in the way that they have without potentially putting the county in a lot of strain, so. With all that said, I'll make the motion that we approve the budget as presented.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty-two budget. As presented, any further discussion? Mr. Volk, Commissioner Brown, anything?
I don't wanna do the hammer, it'll all be well.
No.
And we face the law enforcement center increases, they carry juror office, juror office going up. Nothing we can do with the inflation, the way it's going, I mean. What do you do? They said it's happening everywhere. Well, I was doing some some reading, too, on some of the other counties, and some county or city is taking it differently on how they should be doing a salary increase, too. Some of them are just saying we're, we just can't possibly keep up, and then some of them, like I think, stuff's been in there, an extra bunch of their five percent cost of living adjustment, you know. I mean, so everybody's handling it differently, and I think we're trying to strike a balance, you know? Three percent probably isn't even enough to keep up with the inflation, but we're at least trying to keep our employees as full as we can.
Not this year, it's not. C C P I is five point six.
We're. Eighty, yeah, so by the time you get.
But three turns better than nothing.
Yeah. We said three in British wire, whatever. Well, that 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 one, it looks like, well, three looks like it might not be that bad, but it's just started to escalate after that, like, crazy.
Well, and and we asked for for three across the board. We had some come in greater than that. Should we make those adjustments or identify those that and put everybody at the the same?
I thought that's what we agreed on, the three percent.
The the three percent and.
Okay, so I'm. I'm there, too, because I hate to see someone gets six percent or someone will get three, and then they're coming at us throwing punches, why this happened? Well, you know, Jeff.
Yeah. Not to not to call uh Mr. Jager under the carpet if you don't wanna talk, but I remember when we initially had you come and present your budget, you said that you had a larger increase as a place to negotiate.
Correct.
Do you wanna elaborate anymore on that before we take a vote on this?
Well, some of it involves where I started and, you know, when you look at the proposals, there's quote the market point. I started below that. That's kind of already behind me at all. Um so with the increase, it would be putting me to that point or really close to, actually just shy of it. Um or it'd be right there. That's kind of where I was looking at. Um I wasn't, I knew that I was gonna have to go for a bigger number to negotiate back into where I wanted to be, and that's kind of where I was trying to get to. I was trying to get to the market point where people are currently advertising for the same position way higher than most, and it's because inflation, people just aren't applying. Um trying to find quality employees is difficult, so that's why I kind of went for that route. Get closer to the the norm versus being behind and constantly trying to catch up. I think with inflation, though, you're gonna, it's gonna be constantly, constantly trying to catch up until it stops, and I'm not in your defense, but across the board, I think we're behind across the board, but on the same token, it it's not gonna stop for a while. I don't think we're gonna see it stop for a while. We're gonna be constantly playing this game. One thing I'd add to that, too, is I think it's, we didn't necessarily budget for it, but now that we have Brian on board, we're gonna have some flexibility, maybe with some of those funds. I think it's probably gonna be beneficial next year that we should look at, looking at all of the salaries across the county to make sure we're competitive comparatively to other counties and and private sector as well as the possibility of, I mean, in the highway department, for instance, we have multiple employees that are capped out on the years. So maybe we need to look at stretching the salary structure as well, so we can maybe, you know, reward these long-time employees better raises than just that cost of living, because they're basically getting. I mean, and I understand that you can't have a a blade operator at some point make a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, cause that's out of market, but at the same point, if you've been with us, you've been with us for thirty-five years, you deserve to get a decent raise, so you those are the people we need to protect. So I I think it's, at some point this next year, we're gonna have to sit down with Brian and and talk about, you know, looking at least at some type of a salary survey or structure. I'm not against that at all. And the other thing I would say, too, is I think it would be beneficial at some point to talk, when we talk about that, to have some type of a structure for our employees to, so, you know, cause we only look at a salary survey, whatever. The last time we did was mid fourteen. That's too far in between them, probably, so we should have some type of infrastructure, so if employees feel that their market value wasn't correct anymore, they can talk to H R and then they can do just a salary survey around certain positions or maybe split it up, so every year we only do a third of the position or something, so that we can try to stay more current. Because it, you know, everything moves so quick now with the relationship and everything. And so this is so big of one month, so. Exactly, yes. Try try to do it more often, but it's expensive to do a salary survey, too, so that's part of it. We don't do it very often. I don't, I wanna discuss that, too, and some of the is very difficult, because you're comparing two other cold county sizes, they may be way below. And that just hurts everybody across the board. Yeah. Well, that's why a a full market study factors in, you know, private and everything else, you know, trying to say, where do we have to be at to be fair and to compete against other entities within our community and across the state to get people with the expertise necessary to do the job? So, I mean, if you're doing it correctly, I would guess, so it's just something I think we're gonna have to look at. And that's why they always bring the private sector in, otherwise, yeah, you would get way less feeling, you know, that's just how it is, yeah. Well, and and this isn't necessarily pertaining to this particular budget, but I'll say, too, in terms of listening to the discussion about defined benefit versus defined defined contribution on the pension plan as well, is going to be huge for the county in the future, dependent upon what the legislature recits do and how the Association of Counties attacks that once they make their decision. Because if it goes from a defined benefit to a defined contribution plan, that is going to be a negative for our employees in terms of long-term retirement planning. And we're gonna have to either increase wages or find a way to stay defined benefit or something. We're gonna have to look at that, too, at some point in time, unfortunately. Cause that's one of the reasons why you keep the wages where they are. Exactly, because benefits, our our health insurance and our retirement are fantastic. Health insurance. T V. Not many people are doing the whole family. And it's, you know, there's just, it's, there's just a lot of stuff that around in keeping quality employees that is really gonna start shifting here in the in the next year or two, that the county's really just, I mean, all the political stuff are gonna really stay on top of it. I mean, we've talked about that health insurance plan a number of times.
And that's why when they.
Here it comes, huh?
That's why when they always do their studies, they put that into the bill major. That's why when they always do their studies, they put that into the bill major. A lot of people don't understand that. When they, use the state jobs as an example. Every time there's a state job, they put all those benefits into that package and saying, okay, if we take this benefit package away, this is where you're gonna be. When we put the benefit package in, this is where you're at, this is how you're comparing to the public. You know, and everybody has to take that into consideration. It is working for us also.
I think we do fine in this survey. I mean, you do. I think maybe we're a little bit behind on salaries itself and benefits.
The benefits are on the wrong.
I think to your point, we need to legislate lobby to that, so the county stays in that program.
Well, and I think, yeah, and and I heard a little blip on Craig Public last week where it was, I can never remember the gentleman who's the executive director for the lead cities. What was it?
Clay Crosby.
Clay Crosby, I'm sorry, Clay Crosby. And Terry Trainer had a little snippet too, and they were talking about how it's, it's a recruitment tool, but it's also a tool to keep high, high, long term quality employees because, you know, we we it's. So I think it's gonna be a deal where, and and talking through one of these nine meetings too, if the state decides they're gonna go to a defined contribution plan versus defined benefit, then the counties and the cities are gonna have to sit down together and say, can we take this on ourselves? You know, and and how it can be functioning. So there's gonna be just a lot of, it's gonna be a lot of movement sand under all of this to figure out how exactly it's gonna function. But it's it's a huge recruitment tool. And you can say, we just, we have quality retirement, we have quality healthcare, it's it's a full benefit package. So it's, it's gonna be something that's gonna have to be looked at. Just have to keep our ear to the ground and there, but I think they're just starting to do the interim work on it right now at the lead as well.
And I think you're seeing, you're starting to see the change when people do apply for jobs. And I know when we're hiring people, I'm at, that is one of the first questions. What is it? Or not even asking, what are your benefits? One of the first questions we can ask when we're done with the interview, how we have any questions. What are your benefits?
That was one of the first questions.
And and a little bit in in Mr. Jager's defense, that is a, one of those unique positions where emergencies don't generally fall upon eight to five, Monday through Friday type of criteria. Although I think we have quite a few essential positions within the the county that, you know, if there's a disaster that happens, we're all answering the call. Whether it's emergency management or auditor or treasurer's office, county highway, you know, if there's a storm or things need to be moved with heavy equipment, they're looking at that organ at all. So. So I think part of that defense, you know, Chris is a one man show with a twenty-four seven on call type of situation. But the other aspect of it, you know, fifty percent of his salary is reimbursable by the state. So regardless of what we pay him, fifty percent of that salary is, it is, the state does not set a limit upon that, Chris? I didn't think so, yeah. And it's also a requirement that we have that position built.
Does they require proof that we, that we paid our half? Have they ever asked for that?
Yeah, every quarter.
It's like we can just raise your salary, you know, what, fifty percent would be what we want to pay and they can just take it for the whole thing?
Well, okay, so, you know, the only, the only thing that probably bears bringing up on this, and unless I miss something, what what number, Chris, were you using as your comparable for, what what is the average salary for emergency management state?
I I actually didn't pull that information because it's so difficult because I can't. I was looking at only county stuff and it and it is so wide. Maybe, I mean, if you give me a minute, I can pull it up and give you.
Well, I just, I just want to know how you developed what your app, you know, you told me basically that you were trying to get into the average. And the only, the only reason that I I'm bringing all this up, you know, is last year, we added ten thousand dollars to risk management, which is part of your salary also.
Right.
So functionally, last year, you got a ten thousand dollar increase to your salary. This year, we're gonna, if we approve the budget as written, we're gonna give you seven thousand more on top of that. Right? Because you you got paid in twenty twenty-one, you got paid fifty-three thousand four seven two on emergency management. We're gonna go to sixty thousand eight hundred sixteen, which is an increase of fourteen percent.
No, that actually number is incorrect. That number was completely wrong. That was.
The middle is what was actually paid.
Yeah.
Which side?
What, the number is actually? Yeah.
The the middle column is what was actual for.
We paid this twenty-six thou, is that our column or?
No, it's just.
That's what we pay out and then what.
State comes the other way.
So, but that's, so that's half is what we're paying there? So of of the the increase then, uh, because this number on the far right is the actual change in your salary, right? So half of that would be borne by us. Is that correct?
So, yeah, four thousand dollars for grand total from.
Right? Well, I think so, yeah.
Forty-six, thirty-nine, forty grand total for the budget. This is our. Yeah, the there's the very first one you guys got, the very first information, you got the numbers were were wrong. On my salary study, Candy, I think, sent out the correct version, or this, the.
Yeah, she did it. So what what was the fifty-three, four seventies, two, three, plus the step then? What's that equal?
That was the wrong one, the fifty.
Fifty-two, four seventy-eight, it was on there?
Fifty-six, one seventies.
So that's what, if we added that in that way with?
No, that's the corrected version. That's the right way. So the difference between what it will be, um, the three, if I'm, if I understand correct, Candy, correct me if I'm wrong, would be fifty-six, one seventy-six.
And you wrote down sixty-eight, sixteen, so basically four thousand dollars difference.
Four, three, six, one, yeah.
You worked this year for fifty-three thousand and four seventy-two, right?
No, because you gotta add this ten thousand from the management that he got last year.
Okay, let's do one at a time.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying that basically, basically, the only, the only concern that I have, Chris, and this isn't, this isn't to 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 pick on you, is that on the whole, that means that in in two years, your salary has gone up by, you know, well, by the time this is done, it'll bet seventeen thousand dollars in two years.
I also work another half too that's quote unpaid, it just quote falls underneath my budget.
Right, and and before that, it was always unpaid. Now, I'm not saying, and when this came up last year, the reason that we, you know, but basically we're okay with it is because it's fine. It is, it is a responsibility, it should be paid. I'm not arguing that. I'm I'm only arguing that that's a really big swing of of actual dollars. And if if, for example, every department came in and asked for the same thing over the course of two years, well, the taxpayers would be paying a lot more money, you know, that'd be a huge expense.
Right.
So I I'm I'm only, I'm only talking in terms of.
I I wouldn't like to, what what I would like to do is give across the board, three plus the step, I know that probably will make you happiest, but with the guarantee that we're gonna do a market study, it would be enough.
Well, and I, and I, I mean, I'm not, you know, I know that that's not.
I know that's not what you want there.
But it, but it's one of those things where where it's, it's gonna be difficult because if 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 we set a precedent that without having done a market study, done our own research, that we we can do that, everybody could come in and ask for that.
Yeah, and that and that's where we get into trouble. And that's, that's where I have a concern as well.
Well, at least on the market study, you have something to hang your hat on.
Right.
I mean, even when we hire somebody new, it's based off of previous salary of that employee. Plus, we have our step system already built in that was off of the previous market study, even if it is outdated. So we have something to hang our hat on. But I I I just coming back to the concept that we we have to try to stay more up to date with looking at salaries and, you know, competitive salaries so that we can stay competitive with with other entities. Because we're probably, we're probably on a date, we probably need to increase.
Well, I think, you know, why, why don't we just sort of agree now that we're gonna do what it takes to get a market study done in this next fiscal year?
Yeah. I think everybody sounds like they're on board, just better figure out what it's gonna cost.
Well, potentially, I'm probably have to change my motion because my motion was to approve the budget as as presented, which it sounds to me like it might be the will of this commission to change that.
Brian Volks?
I I was under the whole impression that we were doing three percent across the board.
Right, because because if we approve the budget as budgeted, then everything that we just discussed will go out the window and it'll just be what's in the book. So the question then is, is, do, you know, do we approve that or do we, we put all the employees at three percent in the step?
I'll I'll throw another branch in the in the equation here. I'd like to see the three percent with the step across the board that we agreed to off of the initial. Then I would like to see us at some point, once we get to the end of the year and see what the inflation effect value is, use those ARPA funds to get one time bonus pay to make up the difference in the inflation, to help, you know, people out. Plus, we'll have the money to do it. So that's, that's just my opinion.
Well, in in that ARPA meeting, did they specify?
It has to be an essential employee.
So so not everybody would qualify for that.
I know, and we would have to look at who would be essential enough before we made that decision. I realize that, but I'm saying I would like to at least look at it.
Let's leave this budget alone. Let's, let's just go ahead and do it, what we, what we got.
And what did we agree on?
We were sad with that.
So it's for everybody?
We've never been in a talk any other way. Right?
And Chris, I think you were under that understanding while we were going through this, right, with the three percent?
No, what I proposed. So back to that marketplace or market point, it was actually a Excel spreadsheet that was available through the county. So it says your position one through twenty-five, that's the top. So the marketplace is where you, I would feel that a person would want to advertise for a position because that's where the market's at. I get it, I started with basically zero experience. I think I proved myself, striving every day. But I didn't, I started behind, behind that. So now I'm behind, quote, what is in black and white, market point. Hence why I tried to get to that market point value. And I get it, asking for the money was probably, it's tough, but when you're already way behind, it's even tougher. Because every increase is still slowly back.
Well, market study is gonna invite involve every employee we have in courthouse. In a position that we need to study, not just certain ones.
Right.
Single them all, we gotta get them all.
Right, and I understand.
That's what we did in fourteen.
Yeah.
But I never did agree with how we did it. I didn't, it's not that I didn't agree with the numbers, I didn't agree how we did it. You know, we needed more input, we needed more facts. You know, and I think one of the ones they looked at that was Walsh County, I think we looked at, Spalding County. We didn't use Van Works Inferno. We didn't use that. I think we used. We didn't go into the oil country. We didn't use that. So that kind of, and I, it really wasn't enough information, I did feel.
And I can agree with you on that because then you're picking and choosing where your, your.
If we're picking a budget here, I'll make the motion we can get market study again the next year. I have no problem with that at all. But we, when we put three percent on board for the budget. I mean. Yeah, things hadn't escalated like they have already in the last, like you say, three, four, or five months. I've never seen it jump like that. But when you got oil banging on eighty dollars. And I got to college yesterday and listening to the university chancellor, he said it's gonna go straight up, it's gonna go to a hundred. No question. Oh, you start charging your diesel in Europe right now. You can't get it. And tanks flowing into this community and people are in Daca.
It's not gonna stop until people go back to work.
We can't raise food without that diesel.
Well, you can't, you can't raise all the food in the world, you can't do something, get it out to the public.
Like I said, I'll, I'll make the motion that we do this study right away. But I think we shouldn't wait till the first of the year. I think that's when we're gonna have a better idea of where this economy's gonna go. I really do.
Right, I, the first of years, to me, was the smarter, the smarter thing to do because we don't think it's gonna happen. But we're, but we're almost, it's gonna be nothing, it's gonna be a problem.
I will know where, yeah, where other counties set their budgets at, what they do, you know, like, how do you sort, it starts with six or five?
I think that, I think their initial had five, it won't be perfectly, but I remember that I I read it, it was higher than what we were looking at though.
So is that, is that compromise acceptable to you?
We just can't.
Sure.
It's hard for us to step out of the box here.
And I understand that, I mean, I really do, but it's difficult looking at what they just opened my position for in a fairly similar company, but if you wanna nitpick, you know, where you're selecting that from, you know, it's well above where my current salary is, that's what they're starting. And even their, um, their assistant was more than what I'm currently making. And it's, it's difficult. And it's difficult amongst all of us, I mean, throughout the state, because we look at the the general starting of a lot higher than what it currently was offered to most of us.
Well, yes, I I suppose we could fire everybody and then have them reapply at a higher, higher wage than than what they're currently making.
You could turn the lights off, lock doors.
I come back to the concept of, it's, I understand where you're coming from, Chris, because we're fighting this on every single outside board we sit, sit on too that you can go to Taco John's now and make fifteen dollars an hour, and we've got people working for us and other outside entities like the library that are getting ten bucks an hour. And and we just can't keep up fast enough with how the budget cycle works on a year for year. We don't have the flexibility of private business to snap our finger and go overnight. Okay, we're just gonna increase and then we'll just turn around and make the taco a dollar more.
Right.
You know, so we we just, we don't have flexibility, which I I I'd like to try to find a way to build more flexibility into the system so we don't have to wait so long in between looking at it.
And I agree, I wanna be fair. I wanna be fair across the board and and that's a part of it and I understand. So, you know, I guess, as long as we get a market study, so at least maybe we all can benefit from it.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, I mean, not at all. We do need to know, right? And it's just, it's just a matter of cart and horse.
Yep.
Right? So the horse that'll pull everybody along, everybody, is when we do a market study. Because I'm I'm, I guarantee it'll be a rude awakening for this board.
There's gonna be increases. Well, like, I think they should be doing a market study this year, correct, and they even had to increase many different.
You know, so it'll be a rude awakening. The problem is, is if, if we just give the increase with no information on our side, then, you know, how how am I gonna look Lisa in the eye when she says she wants to to go up by eight percent next year? You know, because every, every other department, they took the this, this step, which is, you know, time and performance and three percent, which is the cost of living. And they said, okay, that's fair. And that's always how it's worked. So I just think, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make adjustments to everybody's salaries, we're gonna do it to everybody's salaries.
Absolutely. So.
And I know, and I know some of those positions too we have. I mean, I've been capped for years.
Yeah.
But it is what it is.
And and again, I'm frustrated by that. I think we should stretch.
But we've never.
The only thing that I have on the cap is when people take the job, they know it counts up.
I understand that.
They say my job, I got my job capped out and and I gotta base my wages now on, hopefully, there's always an increase.
Well, that's also, that's also the problem when you take a job, right? You're, you're agreeing to take that salary, right?
Right.
Yeah.
The the only issue with that is like, me, for instance, my twenty-five year person is better twenty-five years. How the twenty-three year guy is gonna make more money than the twenty-five?
And that's where we run into problems because then, and even, and and we run into the issue too now, if we don't stay up to date, that you're hiring somebody in and that day. that you're hiring somebody in, and that day-one hire with no experience might be coming in at a seven-year salary because you can't possibly hire somebody in at that year-one salary. And, and, and that's, that's the compression issue. And the state's been dealing with it far more than us, comparatively speaking, but it's, it's, it's why we have to try to stay up to date as best we can.
And the, the step scale is the people, people who have been here less years versus the people who have been here twenty-plus get the bigger increase than the longevity of the employees that have been here twenty-plus years.
Which.
I'm the mistake.
You don't even know we're trying to get you to retire?
I can't.
That's the way it is. I mean, that's how it works.
Is that what you want? Is that what you want?
I'm probably one of the few in this room that can say that, they want you to retire, you know. Down the road, get the hell out of here. You're way too far.
I'll wait till I hit the forty mark and then I'll retire.
I understand that we're trying to catch up on the lower one, but at the same time, it's still, I mean.
Because you have, you have a lot of employees with longevity.
I know.
And you're still getting, you're still getting the cost of living if you're capped out.
Yep.
We are, and I, and I, yeah.
Which is good, so we're trying to keep you current, so your earning power doesn't go backwards at least, which is the point.
That's how they explain it.
And I, I keep trying to remind employees that you're getting full benefits.
Well, that's in the motion today. That's in the motion today.
Like, I'm reminding them that.
Yeah, and I agree with that. That's there. That's a great benefit, especially when you get older.
Let's go, let's go.
Well, okay, I need to retract my motion, because we've already, we've already changed from my motion, so I retract my motion.
Okay, so you're gonna change your motion then?
I will make the motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-two budget as presented with all employees having their salaries adjusted by a step and three percent. Is that correct? We good with that?
I don't think we're right to what our initial budget was, yes, I will second that.
Can you say, like, based on evaluations?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Based upon our normal employment background.
Hey, any other words you wanna add?
And, to, or with, uh, right?
Yeah, they, well, I don't know if that needs to be a motion, but.
I think that should, yeah, let's make that separate.
Yeah.
Make it separate, okay?
Okay. The budget should just be, yeah, the budget.
Motion in a second.
Do we have a second?
Yes, a second.
Oh, did you, I didn't hear that, okay.
Before the motion, I'd like to thank all our employees.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we, we have, we have a, a great group of employees and i- if it hasn't been said recently, I'll say it again, they're our most important asset here at the county. And everything that each and every one of them do is greatly appreciated, so.
Being, being at convention for the last couple days and you sit and you visit with other counties, yeah, like.
We got some counties that are losing three, four on the top. They just quit. Tony County was one of them.
Nobody, nobody could get along.
Retired?
Quit.
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 Couldn't get along.
Couldn't get along.
So, we have people that get along and they're okay.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
You guys are okay.
I don't mind saying this either, gets along comes from the bottom.
It does. It does.
You shouldn't get along very well.
Well, and, and I'm fortunate that most of the department has like a chatty juice, so I'd say, I hope it stays that way.
Sometimes.
Any further discussion? If not, uh, should we do a roll call on the budget?
Yes.
Sure.
Sure.
Volk?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye. Twenty-twenty-two budget is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with a market study, uh, in January, starting in January of twenty-twenty-two and that we allow Mr. Singer to, to lead that for us, for all our employees.
Come up with a plan. Come up with a plan, you know, and then the commissioner will plan.
Yeah, well, okay. Come up with a plan for a market study for all our employees, starting in January of twenty-twenty-two.
Because there will be a cost involved in that and, and.
There's gonna be a cost.
Yeah, so.
I'll second that motion.
Moved in second that we, uh, Director HR, Director, Mr. Singer, to go ahead and start researching and bring forward a market study for wages.
Proposal for market study.
Proposal for market study. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries.
Do you want to give a throw-in one more thing?
Yep.
In, in relation to this whole thing, I, I don't know if we do it or not, that, do we give our employees a total compensation sheet that adds up everything, that all the benefits, so with, with the wages, with the retirement, with the health care and a total dollar figure of what you're receiving as a total package from the county as by their employment? Just out of curiosity.
It shows on your paycheck.
It's on your paycheck, it's on your paycheck.
Is that with retirement and everything else at the end of the year, so you see that?
What, what insurance, what insurance, like, health insurance?
Okay, I just, I'm just, I just think that's, I think it's really beneficial because they do that through all true for Kelly as well and, and it's, you see.
Yeah, through HR.
Okay, this is what my wages, but by the time you add on all the benefits with the health insurance and everything, it really, it shows you a total picture of what, what you're getting.
And a lot of times when you do that, people realize that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing is that hiring, that HR do that.
Yeah, HR should, we put that out every, every first of the year that should come out, so that every employee.
Well, it's, it's on, it's wrote on the bottom half of our pay stubs, that they get, of, of what it is monthly and then what you're running totally is.
And then, so, so your last paycheck of the year, you see the running total, total compensation with retirement, whatever.
Because the county portion of it has the, um, the asterisk for the stars beside it of what the county gives.
I, I think that's a.
And the only reason I, I agree with that is because, for instance, if you go out and you compare to other jobs, you can always take that into,
Well, yeah, yeah.
Whoa, this is where I'm at, okay, am I really doing bad?
Yeah, well, and that, that's where.
They were calling each other.
You know, make huge.
This is a great.
Well, I think that's where I'm saying, I, a consideration when you're talking public versus private. Because if you go from full health coverage to fifty percent health coverage paid, you gain ten thousand dollars worth of salary, but you lose twelve thousand dollars worth of premium, very worth of, uh, health insurance upfront premium that you have to pay out of pocket, you're actually moving backwards even though it looks like you're making more money. Plus, our retirement plan is better than any retirement plan you're gonna get anywhere else. So, I think it's just worth looking at.
And thank you for paying for health insurance.
Yeah.
Because it's, we've got a good plan and it's, yeah, I mean, you know.
And I've never minded making sure that our employees are taken care of, you know.
That's the first thing you need to do.
Okay. I'm done.
Okay.
That's enough.
Any, moving on. Uh, last item of unfinished business, a proof letter to the city of Devil's Lake. Uh, this is something that we've been discussing since, I believe, August, when preliminary budgets were, um, first finalized. We had our attorney, our state's attorney, Mr. Cummings, uh, draft a letter for us. Uh, it has each of our, uh, lines on it for a signature. And any further discussion on sending that?
I think it looks good and I'm willing to sign it as a certificate.
Okay.
So, I guess I'll make the motion that we approve signing.
Oh, I'm for signing it too. I think that we need to come to some kind of, it has to happen. We've been talking about this, they got started with the conflict issue. I mean, I, I see both sides, but on the same token, it has, we're gonna have to tell the public, something has to happen. We can't keep going like this. What happened to us was we're coming up with another seventy thousand dollars right at the end of the budget. I mean, seventy thousand dollars, be realistic. We had that seventy thousand, maybe we could've gave him the raise that he was looking for, you know.
You're giving a lot of raises.
And it's just, it's frustration that they waited to the end. That's my biggest frustration. If you didn't wanna do that, why didn't you just let us know it? So, we could've budgeted up throughout the year, you know, Candy's not jumping through, or where am I gonna come up with this money now? You know, it's a little late in the game to say, I have, they played, I don't, it, it was played like that. And that's wrong. What if we would've played that game and did that to them, thinking it would've helped, we can help. There's, there's nobody here that can say we'd be happy if someone did that. It's, it's a substantial amount of money.
Well, it's not, and it's not just us, although we picked up the tab, it's unfair to every other member of that agreement, right? So.
I'm not happy that we're putting more people into it either, but it's just the way it is.
Well, and it, it, it's not like it's been a one-time instant. You know, it, it's been ongoing since I've been a commissioner, um, since Mr. Brown's been a commissioner. Um, it seems to be an ongoing recurrence. And I, I think this letter kinda indicates our frustration and our unsatisfaction with how that's played out and that we need to come to the table and come up with a joint powers agreement on that law enforcement center and then move forward with the, the joint, uh, agreement between the, the four or five entities that are part of that.
At least the public can hold a standup. Is there any language that you would like to see changed in the letter? Is it stern enough to get across your point?
I believe so. Yeah, I think it's stern up, stern up front, the way it's muted is expressing that we're frustrated, but that we want to just sit down and try to hammer this thing out because we think it's beneficial for all, for the city of this thing, you know, figured out basically.
I would suggest one thing. I would put a figure in there that we, we really budget at the end.
Making sure, hold that for real quick.
I think we added a, uh.
That kind of sets the stage on how I felt that day.
And was it, yeah, didn't we round that up to eight, uh, even eighty thousand?
It was like the.
Candy?
Yeah, typical check.
The frustration I had, it wasn't like, uh, Rob had to try to go over there and work with the budget. How many kinds was he put on there again and then got canceled off, you know?
Well, even we got blown off, and then when we were having meetings on.
Right, and to me is, could you imagine if we did that to the public that comes up here, we just blow them off and they're all gonna do, nope, sorry, we don't have time, gotta move on? We just pissed off people and that's not what we're here for. We're trying to, granted, you're not gonna make everybody happy, but you're gonna try to work with it.
Well, generally speaking, I mean, if it's, if, if it's as big a concern as the city feels that it is, then you should want more open lines of communication with the individuals that are doing the budgeting and running this facility to make sure that the communication is there, to make sure things will be handled, I mean, not last. Quality communication usually solves a lot of problems. They talk a lot of stuff out.
So, the suggested change then is in line for, uh, the sentence is, it is our opinion the city of Devil's Lake has not adequately fulfilled its obligations to the residents of the city and the other invested entities by underfunding the law enforcement center that changes by eighty thousand dollars in its recent budget. Is there a motion for that? Or by approximately eighty thousand dollars, whichever you prefer.
I'd use approximately.
Approximately is the number. Did you make a motion?
I, I made a motion, but all in my motion. I think technically all this discussion has been out of order, so I'm correct, that's okay.
So, you, you made a motion to set a letter down?
I, I'll, I'll, my motion to, to, to say that, uh, you need to add approximately eighty thousand to that sentence, by approximately eighty thousand dollars.
I will second the motion that we set the letter with the amended language.
Okay. You have a motion in a second on the table?
By, by way of clarification before we approve this, there, every, it's the intention of every commissioner here to sign this, correct? I don't wanna, I don't wanna approve this on the app, the commission have a commissioner with an empty signature on it.
Yeah.
We'll have a roll call vote.
We'll, we'll, we'll have a roll call vote and then we can have both changing it as we're, as we're going. We can have that, uh, printed off before we leave and sign before everybody leaves the room today. Clear?
All right.
Roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye. Motion carries. You got that?
Yep.
Andy Boss?
I'm sending it to Nathan right now and I will grab it.
Okay.
Just, I'm gonna do color like you did.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Moving on, any other unfinished business? Uh, new business, approve special permit.
Move to approve, second.
Motion in a second to approve the special permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve or appoint a North Coast State Fair delegate. State Fair delegate, uh, State Fair Association meets in November, I believe, and might not, or is it Bismarck this year? Can't remember. Uh, I know we tried to rule, rule it. Um, one, one year I went to Bismarck for it and slipped, slid it down the road, but.
Does this have to be a commissioner? You don't can?
I don't believe it does.
Oh, as a county commissioner, we're responsible, we're just responsible to appoint one delegate.
Do we not already have?
Specify that this program must reside in your county, bless you.
Thank you. She's on the state board.
She's on the state.
Yeah, we're sending her, she's the regional rep for the, to the state board. We're sending just representative from the county to.
It, it's their annual meeting and they've got kinda go through everything that went on in the, in the past year. They go through the, um, all the payments for the, all the prizes, the, the books from the fair.
Yeah, somebody, there should be somebody that goes to the fair, taking kids to the fair or whatever.
So, this is a one-time going?
I'll let you have, I'll make a motion that we appoint.
I'm ready on the third word.
Moved in second that we, uh, appoint Commissioner Holt to attend that. I believe it's, uh, November sixteenth. November sixteenth at one P M. at the, uh, FFA Center, FFA Hall at the State Fair Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
We'll need a half later. If you can't make it, let me know, if you're my daughter, mom, you know, it's nice. And they go, they go there and spend a week in fair with the kids, so. I think somebody should go to the, yes, somebody should be involved.
You're positive this is November sixteenth?
You can't go to, I think I'll, 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 I'll. Maybe you'll change it to next month.
One P M. Usually if you show up at noon, I think they have a, a lunch, uh, soup and sandwiches, uh, for delegates.
No, it's all part.
No, all part of the deal. Yeah, so. All right, moving on, approve raffle permit.
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the raffle permit in your packets. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, set appraisal values and hearing date for October nineteenth at five forty-five P M.
Oh.
This is the foreclosure list, is that correct? No, second. Moved in second that we set appraisal values and hearing date for October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, five forty-five P M.
How, how many properties do we have on it?
We ended up with six, seven. Of a hundred and thirty and eight.
I know Candy and Lisa were, you know, were working the phone ones. I know Candy and Lisa were, I know, were working the phones and taking in a lot of, a lot of money last week, so appreciate you guys.
Good job.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, man.
Do we have motion to approve that date?
We're gonna.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, CPR first aid training, uh, this is something that Mr. Jaeger and Mr. Rude have been working together with and coming up with a, an idea to get some first aid training for employees. I think the cost is sixty dollars per person, correct?
Yeah, it's if you wanna be certified, if that's, if you wanna be certified, um, basic lifesaver, it's sixty dollars per person and that includes the card, because the card costs twenty dollars, nineteen dollars to be exact. They also will do, um, basic first aid and basic CPR without certifications for less. Uh, ten dollars per person for CPR and then ten dollars, uh, for the first aid, that's kind of a combo class. So, just looking at, I know it's been a while, I've had a lot of people asking me when the next class is gonna be available and then whether they wanna be certified or uncertified is up to them. So.
Just need approval.
Need, need, need approval to go ahead and, and pay for that for.
You're gonna use the basement or something?
I was saying the basement, the big training room or something.
Reduced liabilities and all our department heads will be certified. And, uh, there'd be obviously some expenditure within that that we paid for their, their certification fee. So it would be what, you know, the sixty dollars or.
One of the things they learned is how to use the wall, uh, if you do AEDs.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I said that AEDs would be covered, um, and actually I would like, I mean, as best as mandatory, mandatol the team to do it is, uh, learn how to just basic operations of the AEDs.
I think it's beneficial for all employees.
Very, yeah, yeah.
You never know if we're gonna come up on an accident, say, or somebody has an issue with a basketball, whatever. It's good to just be.
Kevin, are all you guys first aid trained? No?
A couple are certified, three guys. Is it, is it good for like every three years? Two tours or two years?
We make this and that before then and, uh, mandatory.
Is, is, what, is, is part of that's motion that we're gonna pay for it as well, correct?
Yeah.
What, are we gonna use COVID funds or?
Sure.
I'll send it.
Okay, we'll use something.
Use some. Motion and a second to go ahead and offer that for employees. Thank you, Mr. Jaeger, Mr. Rude for us for bringing that up and Lake Region Ambulance Service. So, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'm sure you'll work with Sean, uh, give him a date and get those notices out there.
Yep.
And I'll get that to Brian and Brian can shoot it off with a, um, an email of some sort.
Wonderful.
Sure. Any other new business? If not, visitors and delegations. Don't everybody experience. Portfolios. Start with Commissioner Lightbun?
Well, uh, I don't have anything too exciting. Visited between the state's attorney and the court system yesterday, uh, about expansion in the state's attorney's office with new employees we just approved. Uh, don't have a solid plan yet, but we've got a few ideas that we're bandying about and we're gonna have to visit with some, some different individuals in the building to try to figure out what we can and cannot do. Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight. We need a, we need a little bit larger courthouse, that isn't gonna happen, so we just have to figure out how to make it work accordingly. Trying to think what else. Extension agent, we already talked about, uh, we had a really nice, really good hiring committee. Uh, I will thank the hiring committee that was also on it, Sarah was a part of it, myself, uh, Adam Winju, uh, represented Nancy on the crop agreement, uh, and then we also had Preston Sandin from Precision Eight over at the college's program. So, a big thank you to everyone that's had on that. Took all of the whole morning and, and good afternoon to get everything done, but it worked really well. From outside boards, um, I believe I have a library board meeting next week. Our chair was working with the city to get, uh, job description put together with the advertising deal. We made a motion to allow her to go get that finished, so, um, she'll be, that'll be out fairly quickly, I would guess. So, uh, hoping we get a few good applicants and, and we can get that taken care of rather quickly. Other than that, I don't think we have a whole lot. For we Devil's Lake, we, we met with, uh, a few weeks ago, actually we had three commissioners there when the commerce department came up and, and, uh, visited the center a little bit. It's, uh, interesting to, to learn how commerce functions and, and some of the bottlenecks and stuff like that, so that was a good meeting. Uh, other than that, I think that's a good one, yeah.
All right, Commissioner Volk?
I'll start with the lake access, um, we didn't have a meeting in Au- in September, I don't know if it was August, that one coming up. But the big news is, um, Bob Gibson's working with Bob Fraylor on extending six mile label rounds because right now you can't put any boats in there, you drop off the edge of water delves and once you drop it off the edge, east label landing at like two feet to get out of there, so they're looking at working with all of that. We had that big name S thing, I can, um, just read off spirit, Lake Tribe has a new tool in the fight for invasive species like leaver mussels. They're putting in a three D cleaning station twenty October this year. We're supposed to be putting that in, um, moving on the fair board. Put a committee together for, uh, building to talk about, we got paid from the rodeo, but then to talk for age talk and play another minutes, so we'll put together that. Recorder's office, they said that they dropped off records that are archived in State Historical Society, that I got all done. And I talked with Lisa, um, on her Bremer account, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars in three months. The link though is gonna be, be a long-term thing. Federal COVID money. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, we can spend that.
Um, we can spend the interest out of it. So I was thinking every December thirty-first, how long we can have it, I would just move those funds. You know, it might be fifteen hundred, couple thousand dollars, but it's still general fund, so I'd move it.
We're talking to two mil in CDs, we got point three zero percent for one year, and then two mil up. That's not so good in the money market.
Yeah, but it's better, yeah.
Right now, our money that we put at three, um, was three mil, put in municipal funds is way better than the money market.
Correct.
So you get the track of it. And we'll be getting a quarter of the state of now.
Correct, and I can give that to Candy if that's something that you all wanna take a look at.
Oh, you're helpful. Candy, I'm glad you can use.
We'll go and pack it.
Good tool to look at.
Sure.
Other than that?
Ed?
Yeah, Steve Hall's at the jail again, we started yesterday, he'll be there for tomorrow. And just, yeah, closed off meeting tomorrow, so. My little there. Had meetings about tomorrow. So, you know, all that, always, seeing your mail's doing good, so.
Haven't managed to get in to see the sheriff, uh, this week yet. We heard from what's going on at District Health, uh, so I don't know that I have so much to add on that. And the Heritage Center actually has gotten a ton of friends recently, it's gone really well. They had some problems with, um, leaking pipes and they had the city come and the, the pipe leak was essentially somewhere in the wall of the structure, which, well, what it really was, was it was a claw. It was in the wall of the structure, so that was gonna be really difficult, uh, to, to get it fixed. They actually did get it fixed and it sounds like the city is going to forgive the man hours that they put in. So they're not gonna charge the Heritage Center for that, um, but that should stop that basement from flooding, which really means that the only major, the two major problems that remain for the Heritage Center structurally are, uh, that the roof keeps leaking occasionally.
Right.
About every spring and that those steps on the front are collapsing, but, but given what has been wrong with it in the past, that's where we're getting closer, so that's good.
Good.
That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Well, uh, gonna have a whole lot, I wanna thank Candy for all her hard work and her department and, uh, certainly wanna recognize the people that had gone down to the N D A C O conference. We had really good representation down there from Ramsey County, three of us commissioners. Uh, just about all our department heads were down there, uh, Lisa, Kevin, Candy, Beth, Bev from the recorder's office, um.
Brian.
Brian, um, was there? Sheriff Nelson was there. Uh, so, yeah, it was a good, good opportunity to learn a lot of different things. That, uh, money that we have, I think we should, uh, maybe come up with a committee. I'm not sure who exactly should sit on that committee to help, uh, determine, uh, how we spend that and what our, our greatest needs are. I know we have some political subdivisions that are already looking at, asking for some of that money. Uh, political subdivisions, uh, are held to the same standards that we would be held under, uh, same stipulations. So if they misspend the money, it doesn't fall back on them, but falls back on us. Um, and then we would have to repay that money back to the federal government. So we wanna be very careful on how we spend that money. But I think we need to come up with, um, what our greatest needs would be, uh, within the county and how to best spend that. Like, we've mentioned before, it's a one-time expenditure. We don't want something that's gonna be established as a reoccurring expense for that because then we'd have to end up putting that bill back upon our taxpayers. Um, I think that we have some needs within our own building that, uh, could be identified and, and spent that potentially would be expenditures down the road. But, uh, you know, if we're gonna have this money, we need to spend it wisely, I think, and, and, uh, come up with a method of, i- if we don't spend it right here within ourselves, if we're gonna divvy it out to political subdivisions, we need to have a criteria on how do we come up with a prioritization list for that and who qualifies and how much they qualify for, kinda thing. But I, I think that would be a prudent way to, to go about doing that. I know the state will be meeting in November, um, to discuss not only redistricting, but spending some of their COVID dollars and how they, it's distributed to, back to counties. I know there's a lot of different asks out there. People are asking for buckets of money and, uh, I think there is something in, uh, on the news last night, that Long Term Care Association is asking for, I think, forty million of that for additional staffing, uh, for their entity. I think, uh, same thing for a lot of different, uh, associations, agencies that have gone through very difficult pandemic over the past eighteen months and are asking for some of those dollars back from the state, so. Yesterday was a, a deadline for getting those proposals in, a very short timeline of, of getting those additional requests in and proposals into Legislative Council. I think appropriation committees, uh, for both the House and the Senate will be meeting next week in Bismarck and moving towards a November legislative special session or reconvening last year's, uh, session, however they determine how they're gonna do that, but, um, all moving forward. I think, uh, Devil's Lake Airport Authority, we're moving forward on the projects that they have identified and spending some of their COVID dollars that they've received and, um, so we're moving forward with that. Water, uh, Ramsey County Water Board is meeting, I think, Monday, they're gonna have a joint meeting with Cavalier County on taking a look at how that Edmore, uh, assessment district vote went and what their next steps are for, um, reproposing that. Uh, the Devil's Lake Joint Board, we are accepting nominations for our water stewardship award from county commissions, extension agents, soil conservationists, your water resource districts, individuals, uh, for our water stewardship award that we present in, uh, December at our annual convention. Uh, the joint board is currently working on a project, uh, doing a maintenance project up in the Morrison Outlet, uh, going from Dry Lake East to Morrison Outlet and, uh, working on that project. I had talked to Kevin about some bridge debris underneath that bridge, uh, next to the Webster Cemetery out there. Looked like some structures from an old bridge that was maybe in there and, uh, maybe asked for some help on removing some of those structures as they could be an obstruction bolt to, uh, water flowage through there as well as, uh, safety concerns for anybody that's traversing underneath that bridge with an ATV or a snowmobile and, uh, happened to run into something like that, but, uh, we currently have close construction working on a, uh, a maintenance project throughout that entire channel. I think it's roughly about five and a half miles that we're working on over there to help clean that up, but. Other than that, uh, all news is good news. Nobody's signed up for a specific time for a Lake Region Law Enforcement Center tour. So, maybe what we'll do is, uh, I'll just set a date and a time and, and we'll, uh, we'll sign up. I, I think it's very important to, uh, to go through that facility, take a look at it, have Rob point out some of the limitations that we currently have within that existing facility, what their ideas are for enhancements or expansions over there. But I also thought that it was a great idea to have, uh, legislators invited to those tours as well. I don't know if anybody's signed up for that, but, um, Rob's always open for a tour over there and if anybody wants to head over there, uh, today, I know Eddie Crummy Commissioner is, uh, planning to bring their entire commission up today for a tour through there. But I think, uh, whether or not State's Attorney Cummings has gone through there, Auditor has gone through there, anybody else, I would like to, uh, an opportunity to tour the jail without actually putting on a, uh, orange jumpsuit, this would be an opportunity to do so.
I can arrange an orange jumpsuit, too.
It, it, it's much, much better this side of the jail than wearing the jet, wearing jumpsuits.
I'd be interested.
So, we will, we'll set up a day at a time, uh, to do that, let people know and, uh, hopefully we can get people in there.
No, but they thought you guys were gonna be coming today?
Right now. Rob thought, thought we'd be there today, so, uh, Emily, Anthony, I'm gonna need some signatures. Any other discussion for today? Any other update, news? New blinds, wanna point those out?
Sharp.
They look sharp. We've got a lot of positive comments from, from those. They work well to, uh, thermal resistance.
I like when you can see outside.
Be able to see outside.
Makes the roof feel way bigger now.
I would go on looking the other direction.
So they're, so they're a great improvement, so, but with that. We are hereby adjourned, thank you all for attending.